Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I thank each and every one of you for coming tonight. And we have a call to order at 7:02, which is item one. And we move to agenda item number two. And I ask councillor McConaughey to give the First Nations Territory Acknowledgement.
We acknowledge with respect the Sandwich people on whose traditional territory the district stands and the Sandwich people whose historical relationships with the land continue to this day.
Thank you. We move to item three, which is introduction of late items. We have a number of late items this evening. Number one late item is number nine C, lowercase i, Reports Committee of the Hall report. That is going to be moved to item nine A. So it's going from nine C to nine A. Number two, which is item nine D, and reports, which is the Budget Committee report. And that's moved to item nine A. I think that's a four. And item three is eleven A correspondence. And that's received from Spring Harrison regarding letters from our bars on behalf of modus regarding termination of contract for the OCP. So that's eleven A. We then have a number of items in item twelve, which is items J to O. And those are the late items that have been given. Is any councillor, do you have any additional comments with regard to late items? Councillor Smith?
Thank you. I don't know if this is the correct time, but I'd like to move twelve L to...
To the Chair. Can we, this is just the accepting the late items. So we can start moving things when we get to approval of the agenda, please.
Say it again, please.
So right now, you're on accepting or receiving the late item package. And then, once we've received that, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda, which is item four, which will have the opportunity for any member of council to move whatever they'd like to.
My approval. My apologies, I moved from eight immediately to four.
Move approval of the late item package.
Thank you, seconded.
I'll second.
Thank you. Those in favour, those opposed, it's unanimous. So item four is the approval of the agenda, which I was in a rush to get to. Are there any additions or deletions?
I guess I'm up first, sorry. I'd like to move eleven, sorry, item twelve L to eleven D, as well as item twelve M.
Twelve L and M?
Yes.
To?
To eleven D. If that's an open space now, is that an open space?
Okay, that's from the late items?
Yeah, yes. And I do have something from the agenda as well.
Okay.
I'd like to move twelve B to eleven A. I apologize, I think I made a mistake there with the correspondence from twelve L. I meant to eleven A.
So you want twelve B, which is correspondence from B Talmi regarding modus contract?
Yeah.
Moved to eleven?
Eleven A. And then, so you go backwards a bit, apologize. Then twelve L instead of to eleven D, or eleven D to eleven A.
Eleven?
A.
A?
Yeah, to the modus.
Okay, so both of the, let me just check, eleven A, which is the discussion on modus. If we look at councillor Smith's suggestion moving twelve L to eleven A, sorry, twelve L and M to eleven A, and twelve B to eleven A, do we have a motion to move?
Sorry, I'm confusing you a bit. Twelve L goes to eleven A.
That's...
Through the Chair, can I just help here? So what I'm hearing is that we would like to move items eleven B and, let me just see, twelve B, twelve L and twelve M to eleven A. Is that correct?
I think that's correct, yeah. Apologize, I'm just getting a little confused with all this stuff coming in here. That sounds right.
Do all councillors understand what has been asked? Yes? Okay. Can we have a motion to move? Oh, sorry, councillor McClintock, my apologies.
Yes, thank you, I hope you can hear me. I'd like to move item twelve A into the last item of eleven correspondence. I wasn't following councillor Smith's itemizing, so I don't know if it's E or D. Nonetheless, I moved twelve A into correspondence.
To the Chair, we'll make twelve A into eleven D for Delta.
Thank you.
And also just to note, for those that are at home or can't see, councillor McClintock is joining us via Zoom this evening.
So we got from councillor McClintock, twelve A is moving to where?
Through the Chair, eleven?
Eleven D.
Eleven D.
Eleven D, thank you. Okay, so we have councillor Smith. I won't go through them, but we also got councillor McClintock. If we put those both together, do we have a motion for both of them to be put together? And you have a motion, we have a seconded. Councillor De Batista. Those in favour, those opposed? It's four-two opposed, motion does not carry. Does anyone else under item four approval of agenda have any additions, deletions? Councillor McConaughey?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move twelve E to eleven D. That's a letter from Gord Gummer regarding community policing.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay. There being no one else, we have a motion to...
Question?
Right. We don't piecemeal this. We do it all at once. So if somebody wants to move something, then you should move it when it's at that period of time, then we all get to vote on it.
Yeah, I choose not to, we'll piecemeal it, unless I'm instructed otherwise by staff.
I would like to ask through the Chair to staff if that is an appropriate approach.
Mr. Chair, I think it is up to the Chair, colour of the Chair, whether you do them individually or in groups.
Thank you. Any further comments, councillor Smith? Councillor McClintock?
Yes, thank you, I hope you can hear me again. If I understand correctly, was my motion to move twelve A to eleven D defeated by the majority of council?
Yes, correct, four-two. It's been rejected, the motion fails. The motion include both councillor Smith's recommendation and also councillor McClintock's recommendation.
To the Chair, I think it was a four-three vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, I see. Yes, four-three, my apologies. Councillor De Batista?
Yeah, through the Chair, I guess my question is, so late agenda item number three, eleven A is directly related to modus. And it's been included in correspondence, but eleven L, eleven M are directly related to the same task. So my question through the Chair to staff is why were they not included as part of general correspondence?
Through the Chair, I can answer that. So the reason why we're doing that is because we receive a lot of correspondence. We do our best to read every piece of correspondence that we receive from the members of the public. We do our best. Sometimes the subject line isn't clear, sometimes it is. It's at council's discretion to move pieces of the agenda as they see fit. My job as the corporate officer is to look at that, follow the bylaw, and do the best job I can to provide an agenda to council. It's up to council to then go ahead and do what they want to do and move items on the agenda. Does that help? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councillor McConaughey? Did we get your motion to move twelve E to eleven D?
I believe we did, and I believe we would need a seconder on that.
Do we have a seconder on that? Councillor Stock? We'll take a vote, those in favour, those opposed, unanimous. So we now call for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Do I have a... Thank you councillor McConaughey, and secondly councillor Stock. The vote, those in favour, those opposed? Jack, sorry, councillor McClintock, did you vote?
Yes, I did.
And in the affirmative or in the, or no?
No, affirmative, thank you.
Thank you. So staff, did you get that? Thank you. We move to item five, was the public participation period. And I will repeat, as we do every time. Rules of procedure. Item one, persons wishing to address council must state their name and municipality of residence for identification, and also the topic involved. Item two, questions and comments must be on topics which are not normally dealt with by municipal staff as a matter of routine. Three, questions and comments must be addressed through the Chair and answers given likewise. Debates with or questions of individual council members will not be allowed. Four, no commitment shall be made by the Chair in replying to a question. Matters which may require action of the council shall be referred to a future meeting of the council. Item five, each speaker during public participation period, A, must use respectful language and refrain from making offensive gestures or signs, and B, is limited to speaking for three minutes unless authorized by the Chair to speak for a longer period of time. Item six, twenty minutes will be allotted for the public participation period unless extended by a vote of council. Do we have members of the public that wish to speak?
Hello, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephanie Jacobs, resident of Sandwich and working in North Sandwich as the new manager of business operations for the Sandown Centre. Last week, some questions were raised about what Sandown has achieved and the rationale for continued funding, so I've come to address that today. As you know, we are asking for a total of $125,000 annually from the Agricultural Reserve Fund. It is important to be clear on this because there's some misunderstanding within the community as to where this funding comes from. Zero dollars from the folks who live and pay taxes in North Sandwich goes to Sandown. When we say taxpayers, we are talking about Canadian Tire and U-Haul, and recognize that half of that tax revenue was set aside for agricultural projects in North Sandwich. The Circular Farm and Food Society was awarded the license to operate in October of 2020, following the direction set out by council to, quote, "develop the Sandown agricultural lands for commercial farming, community food growing, and field-based teaching and learning with partnerships and community involvement being an important part of the success." In late 2020 and into 2021, the Sandown Centre spent $154,000 on capital infrastructure, which is now owned by the district. An additional $63,000 was spent in 2022 on capital investments. Farm operations began at Sandown in 2021, and we had seven farmers remediating and growing food on four acres of land. In two years, we have welcomed over 1,000 people on site through our community garden, tours and events, courses, workshops, school groups, our pumpkin patch and volunteer opportunities. In 2022, Sandown received the Good Food Champion Award from the Good Food Network. We have significant research projects underway with partners such as UVIC and Quanlan Polytechnic University studying soil remediation, regenerative practices and soil health, farmer livelihoods and carbon sequestration. All of this has been achieved despite major setbacks. The soil has required significant continued remediation, which we were not anticipating when farming operations began in 2021. There were a lot of surprises and a lot of gravel, rock, broken cement, rubbish, plastic and more hiding in that field. We have brought in tens of thousands of dollars worth of compost and spent thousands, over a thousand hours picking out rocks and debris by hand. There's also the stormwater management plan. Instead of flooded basements and washed-out roads, excess water is funneled onto Sandown. We can't farm the vast majority of what looks like farmland because of this. The field is inundated and water that comes on site presents contamination risks. The other factor that hasn't been mentioned so far is the pandemic. Sandown began operations amidst this global crisis. Across the region, farmers lost revenue streams. Our ability to bring community together was restricted. Funding opportunities decreased and the cost of everything skyrocketed. Despite all these challenges, Sandown has achieved an incredible amount in just two years of working on the land. Moving into 2023, we will have 12 farmers on site and eight acres of land in production. We are expanding community gardens, expanding our community and research partnerships, implementing a plan to manage the district stormwater, continuing to restore and steward the forest, and acting to demonstrate the important connection between ecosystem preservation and sustainable food production. The annual investment from the Agricultural Reserve helps fund Sandown's operations to restore and steward these 83 acres, develop and manage community programs, train and support new regenerative farmers, and create opportunities for research and extension on regenerative agriculture, climate mitigation and building resilient food systems. We're only now heading into our third year of working the land and are growing from a startup into a more stable phase of operations, but we aren't there yet. I wish I could say we'd done it in two years, but you can't even grow asparagus in that amount of time. This work is complex, vital, and it is ongoing. Please consider all of this as you move to ratify our request for additional funding. Thank you.
Thank you for being clear and concise, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can, my friend, we thank you for speaking.
Alice Fennell, I live at 9723 Orychmore Drive, and I'm speaking to matters regarding Sandown. I wish to address some points that were raised by councillors at the March 12, 2023 Committee of the Hall meeting. From the beginning, it has always been understood that there would be costs to the Sandown initiative. We began to pay that cost when we agreed to exclude 12 acres of the land to remain with the owners and to provide commercial zoning for their use. I was the mayor at that time and had great difficulty accepting this loss of Vale Arland, but that was the trade-off. The CRD, the Agricultural Land Commission, and hundreds of North Sandwich residents understood the value of the initiative, supporting the decision of the council of the day to proceed. That trade-off has underwritten a large part of the cost of preserving and enhancing the 83-acre parcel for varied agricultural uses. I note that the North Sandwich Council's strategic plan, endorsed by this council, which refers to the preservation and enhancement of agricultural land. Preservation and certainly enhancement come with an ongoing cost. The commercial taxes from the excluded section have been used to address some of this cost, and these taxes are continuing and increasing. Council needs to understand and accept that these taxes would not be available without this accompanying agricultural initiative. On another note, the majority of this council was elected on its support of the agricultural and rural character and values of North Sandwich. If the Sandown agricultural initiative fails through lack of adequate council support, our claim to these values also fails. Our key role in the RGS will be seriously undermined and damaged. Finally, the point was raised that the Sandown long-term operator needs to do something spectacular to merit further support from council. In my view, the business prospectus already provided demonstrates that spectacular work has already been done and is continuing, despite lack of adequate support by the previous council. This current council needs to be cautious in actions that may negatively impact the efforts of the long-term operator. An example of a conflicting policy is using Sandown lands as a reservoir for contaminated stormwater runoff in our new master drainage plan, after a previous council spent approximately $650,000 to remedy drainage issues on the Sandown lands. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, my friend. Sorry.
I'm Susan Road, I live in Peter Park, resident of North Sandwich. I'm here as an item of information, but I was actually on the agenda for March 6, at which time it was passed unanimously that all of those items that were deferred over to this would not be for information only. And so I'm absolutely mystified as to why there's been a change in council's viewpoint tonight. I just take that for the record. I'm here because I have significant concerns about the demonstrable examples of the lack of good governance that has occurred since December. I'm not only concerned, I'm disappointed that our local officials appear to have a lack of awareness that a failure to abide by these principles is an affront to our democratic processes. The BC Government's conduct guidelines for locally elected officials notes on its website that less than responsible conduct includes such things as marginalization of a specific council or board member, mistreatment of staff members, which would, in my view, include contractors, alleged breaches of procedure, possibly what just happened tonight, and other breaches of rules during meetings. Since December, residents of North Sandwich have seen all of the above as part of the district's public record. It matters not to me what member was marginalized. I would be here for any councillor that had, that happened to them. Since my letter, I have been advised that every employee who had experience with the draft of OCP has left the district, and now we have modus express a lack of confidence in the mayor's OCP advisory committee, a committee that by its very nature is a direct reflection of the mayor. The departure of experienced staff in modus is not part of the normal transition post-election. I understand that no staff in the party will be able to hold office, and an FOI request will easily reveal that this is correct. What is happening with the OCP is a symptom of the actual illness, a lack of good governance and a failure of all of our elected officials to respect and follow these principles. When he released the councillor's internal email, the mayor suggested on the record that residents would agree with what he was doing in response, and I'm here to say I do not agree. The exercise of discretion is not an unfettered right. The punitive action taken was an abuse of the discretionary powers granted to this office. There is never a justifiable reason for asserting a discretionary right to levy a punishment upon an elected official. It is fundamentally wrong for one councillor to sit in every role on the ministry's OCP advisory council while another is excluded. Favoritism is as wrong as this exclusion. I have a number of questions which are detailed in my letter. I would have been entitled to a response had I been able to speak to this on March 6. Now, accordingly, I'm not going to have a number of questions on the record anyway in the event that you might want to reflect on whether what we did tonight is correct. The most pressing questions are: what immediate steps are going to be taken to rectify these wrongs? Do our councillors understand that they have an obligation to speak up with members straying from good governance practices? And if so, why haven't they done so? Have the mayor and all council members attended and completed the education and training opportunities set out by our protection powers? If no, why hasn't this been done? And when will this be training be undertaken and repeated? Is additional training required? I urge all of our elected officials to change their behavior immediately. With the departure of openly experienced staff in modus, the district lacks professional support to complete the OCP fairly, openly in their capacity. The wastefulness and misuse of this whole discretionary endeavor is unacceptable. It's not only modus, it's lost confidence, it includes residents of North Sandwich. Thank you.
Okay. Different tone. So my name is...
You can get that there, just want to make sure Jack can hear.
Okay.
Jack? Councillor McClintock? Okay, thank you.
Dear Mayor and Council...
Yes, that's the question I was going to ask. I got only bits and pieces of the last presenter's presentation. So perhaps I could speak closer to the mic, that'd be appreciated, thank you.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Maya De Cotton, and I'm a resident of North Sandwich. I've been a regular at these meetings over the last two years, but due to family circumstances, I haven't been able to pay attention until now. In reading the agenda for the meeting tonight, I can see we're at a pivotal moment in the OCP process. As you know, I was also a candidate in our last election, and I know how much of a commitment being on council means. So to our new council, I thank you for your service. And thank you to all of the residents who are listening and may have voted for me. In preparing for the election, I reached out to a friend who had an experience in writing copy for political campaigns. Her advice to me was, dummy down your platform. Her advice to me was: dummy down your platform. She recommended that I take a clear stance on one side or the other of hot-button issues in order to get elected. Well, I told her that having been a knowledge worker all my life, that was totally against all my instincts. And I said, "I'm not interested in doing politics. I'm interested in doing citizenship." Well, she was right. And as you know, I didn't get elected. In fact, I came in dead last. And as a candidate, I believed that middle ground can be found, and I still do. During the election, I stood on a platform of fair, informed, and forward-looking. Preparing for tonight's meeting, I spent 10 hours yesterday scanning through OCPs for all 36 municipalities on Vancouver Island. This is benchmarking work that I'd started doing during the election but never got to completing till now. What this exercise revealed was the incredibly wide variety of OCPs that are out there. I was under the impression that all municipalities were required to do an OCP starting in 2019, but this doesn't appear to be the case. 11 out of 36 municipalities on the island have not updated their OCP, nor does it look like there's any intention to do so. Several others haven't done a formal update in almost 20 years and just used bylaw amendments to update their OCPs. Others still have just started in 2022. And more interesting still, it doesn't even have to be one big document. In fact, many are modular and come in many different forms. I'm saying this tonight to maybe take some pressure off because there's still potential to be some hot-button issues here. It's been two and a half years since the OBCP was started, and it might seem like a long time. But in standard practice of OCP development, it seems that this isn't unusual. So, three minutes is never enough to share more than one or two points. And after two years of addressing the council, I've learned it's a fool's game to try to convince people of your point of view. However, I did compile a document with quink links to every OCP on Vancouver Island, and I encourage every councillor and anyone in of the residents who want to do their own due diligence to form their own conclusions. You might find it surprising that there are so many different approaches to OCP. It's not one-size-fits-all. And in my review, I was really impressed by Sook's approach to how they constructed not just the OCP document itself, but they had an incredible communication strategy. They had an incredible due diligence process in terms of compiling research and policy. And I found innovative best practices scattered throughout many of the OCPs on the island. So, if you would like to reach out to me, you can email me at maya.z.cotton and do your own due diligence. And I'm hoping to be as constructive as I can. Thank you.
To the Chair, just to intercept. 20 minutes, we've had 18 minutes of public participation time, just so that you know. This might be a good opportunity for council to make a motion to extend the public participation period.
Seconded. Deputized.
I can second.
Those in favor? Those opposed? Unanimous.
Is that okay?
Yeah, you can leave the microphone where it is, and it'll pick it up.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Dinah Johnston, and I live in the Sanach municipality. I am speaking about the allocation of funds towards Sandown. I am among one of the first cohorts of regenerative farmers that was at Sandown. And I am someone who eats food regularly and hope to continue doing so in the future. I am strongly for the continued allocation of $125,000 to Sandown for the ongoing management, restoration, and maintenance of the lands on St. Kham territory. The opportunity to grow and be a community at Sandown has been an amazing experience for me, though not without its challenges. I've decided to leave Sandown this year after two years of restoration or remediation and growing because the weight of remediation felt too big for me financially and physically. That being said, I believe that remediating and restoring degraded land is one of our duties as a society and as a whole. The weight of remediating land should not fall solely on the backs of individual farmers and growers, many of whom are young and don't have access to affordable land for growing. Remediating land and improving food security needs to be a priority in our community and every community. The continued allocation of funds to Sandown will indirectly support every regenerative farmer that is there this year and years to come. It employs people in our community in meaningful and important work. It encourages food literacy, education, nutrition, and self-reliance to community members of all ages. It addresses healthy waterways and water management, storm drainage. It encourages biodiversity, which indirectly supports neighboring farms in the areas. And it contributes to a stronger and healthier community in general. And that's just to name a few. So, thank you for your consideration. I look forward to continuing to see Sandown as a hub for restoration, education, and community.
Thank you. Councilor McClintock, you had your hand up.
Yes, I did. It was in regards to the audio, but I got bits and pieces of that. Was that last speaker the person from the Little Crescent Farm?
What did he say?
Yes. The audience is saying yes. Thumbs up.
Okay. Yeah, I just noticed that they left on March 4th, and we're not a member of the Farmpreneur program anymore. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't catch the young lady's first name.
Did we be updating?
Try it again. I just can't hear you. Dinah?
Thank you.
Hi.
Sorry to...
How are you? Good evening, everyone. My name is Jen Ashley. I live at 10209 West Sanich Road. So, once upon a time, a group of North Sanich residents dreamed up a place called Sandown. We envisioned a site, a hub, where North Sanich residents and the public, and scientists, and scholars, emerging farmers and established farmers, policymakers, and children would intersect for learning and action around soil health, around land management, and around the future of farming. We imagined a place where emerging farmers could access land in secure and fair lease arrangements along with mentorship and collegial community that is so incredibly important to get launched and to survive in this very challenging sector. We envisioned Sandown as a connection hub where North Sanich landowners who didn't farm could offer up land to emerging farmers, thereby expanding our local land under production, strengthening our local food system. We saw Sandown as a spark, providing inspiration for scholars to focus their masters, their PhDs, and their careers on soil health and regenerative agricultural techniques. And we imagined a place where, as we improved the soils, we would create the research data to support new region-specific learning on building soil health. Many people have worked very hard to bring this vision to council and to launch the Sandown Centre. It's been a lot of hard work, and I can speak personally to this. I spent, I believe, around six years, and it took everything out of me, I can say. And two years into operations, I'm really happy. My heart is very full to say that every single aspect of this dream is alive and growing. It truly is. It's found its feet and then some. And this is a remarkable thing, and I want to acknowledge the efforts of so many people in so many ways. And it truly is work towards a better future. So, it is true that the Sandown soils are challenging, but there are emerging young farmers who are willing to sink their time, money, and hard work, like Dinah, into improving the soils and in developing a centre that will truly make a difference. There are volunteers willing to enhance the wetlands and bring diversity back to the forest. And there's a staff team that are making the connections in the curriculum to create a local agricultural hub with impact. This is much more than a farm. What these folks need in return so desperately is the stability of an ongoing lease arrangement and base funding that says emphatically that, yes, Sandown is here to stay. This is really what is going to make the difference. North Sanich has something remarkable on its hands, and we have created it collectively. It is action on climate change, soil health, and the future of agriculture. So, I look forward to your decision tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have... Okay. I thought to ask.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Linda Gagie, and I live in Sanich. I'm here on behalf of the Capital Region Food and Agriculture Initiatives Roundtable this evening. I'll be... I work with Chris on the Flavor Trail, so we'll be getting to that in a minute. But today, I just want to talk a little bit about Sandown and the work that we have done over the years with the district in establishing this site. And our work is to promote a healthy and sustainable food systems. And over the years, we have been working on Sandown to ensure that not only is there access to land for farming in the future, but there's an investment in new farmers and also an investment in a sustainable and ecological way of farming. And the North Sanich whole agriculture strategy has set out a direction for the district and shown the support of the municipality for this. And what I'm here to talk about today is not about all of the things that Sandown is doing for the community, because that's clear. You can hear it from the people coming and speaking to you today. I want to talk a little bit about the economic model that we worked on and that was proposed and then moved forward for Sandown. And that was that the agricultural land was that was taken out of the agricultural land reserve. And Sandown, in the deal to provide Sandown to the municipality in perpetuity, was that this would be done in order to provide a benefit to agriculture over the long term. The benefit to agriculture over the long term of taking that land out of production was, one, establishing the farm and providing that to the municipality, but it was also to provide a sustainable tax revenue that would come from the development of that land towards Sandown and all of its work. And so, I'm here as a witness to this process, to a person who worked on that, to who worked with previous municipal staff and councillors and mayors to create an award-winning approach to sustainable agriculture and to remind everyone that this was the economic model that was set up in order to sustain this farm over time. So, today, I just want to speak in support of the continuation of this model. It's unique, and it's, again, very progressive and seen as a model to other developments similar to this. They look to the Sandown model, and they look to the municipality of North Sanich for its leadership that is taken in finding eloquent and unique proposals when a family wanted to move away from having the land for in the agricultural land reserve come up with a development proposal that worked for everybody and was a win-win-win over the long term. So, I just want to thank you for your time tonight and hope that you support the proposal to support Sandown in perpetuity through this economic relationship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Young, North Sanich. I'm one of the people whose letter has been deferred, or not deferred, but put into correspondence for information only, which is very sad because I had many very legitimate questions that I would like to have seen answered by this council. So, I am indeed very disappointed. I also want to speak about good governance and what that means. And I think, like the previous speaker, I won't repeat too much. And I think training is in order so that people, members of this council, can understand the difference between governance and running this municipality, which is Mr. Tanton's job, not yours. It is not your job for council to get involved in the day-to-day workings of this municipality and to perhaps cross the line in dealing with particular employees. And the one I have in mind, of course, is Mr. Green, who resigned after the January 30th meeting in which the mayor confronted him about the number of people who worked in the planning department here, suggesting that Sydney only had two people instead of six, which they actually have, and that somehow the innuendo was that our planning department was overstaffed. So, I want to end with that. I'm, again, very disappointed in what I'm seeing in terms of governance and would like to see more training here so everyone understands what their role is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Sorry, we have someone coming from the back.
It's okay. It's a small hall.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay? My name is Paige Gibson. I live on Dogwood Road. I wanted to come by this evening just to say a few words on the correspondence from MODIS that's on the agenda this evening. MODIS had a vision when they came to North Sanich, which I think works for a lot of municipalities, but maybe didn't work so well for here. The disdain that they displayed with some regularity towards anyone who questioned their methodology or conclusions was palpable and is apparent also in this final correspondence. The correspondence this evening from residents includes a statement along the lines of their termination or their decision to terminate rests on some of your shoulders. And to the extent that that's true, to whatever extent that that's true, I would like to say thank you. I'm very proud we're represented by a council that stands up for its constituents. I'm also very happy to see that unlike the AWG, what was it? Advisory Working Group, the MoPACs, which is not very catchy, but the MoPACs will be constituted in compliance with the community charter and the open meeting requirements that go along with that. That's all I have to say. I'll keep it brief. But I also do appreciate your attention to the occasional weed.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Wayne Winkler. I live in Sydney. I'd just like to have a few words regarding the Sandown Farm Centre. It's kind of interesting. Up until now, it was mostly ladies who came up here to talk about the Sandown process. Maybe it's because they know how to care for things. Anyways, on a large level, global level, I've traveled the world for about 30 years in the environmental business, and some of it was in land regeneration, which is already happening in many places in the world. Some of it on a small scale, some of it on a very large scale. That's basically the future. Locally, with Sandown, I've been volunteering mostly for cleaning up the forest, which is a model of human neglect because, especially when it comes to the ivy growth there and other issues in there. We also do some agricultural work on the farm as well. So, having said that, I think the Sandown regeneration is important, not just as an agricultural entity. It is also useful and will be useful as an education place for not only the locals, but for younger people. Because, as I said, the whole idea of regeneration and is happening and also the issue of climate change as well. Things are not going to be the way they used to be. There will be big changes. And Sandown is very unique, not just to the Sanich Peninsula, but to all of British Columbia. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else who wishes to speak? I'm seeing no one... Oh. Sorry, who's?
Shirley. Shirley from Spire.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see her coming.
Okay, I think we've got this. My name is Sharlene Fromm, North Sandwich resident, and I'm another one whose letter is filed under information. I'm fairly new to the whole political game and governance and whatever, so I don't understand at all. What I do understand, and I come from a group that has often been marginalized and left out of conversation, I have a real issue with anybody being excluded from anything, whether it's OCP or what. I think the more voices that we include and listen to, whether they agree with us or not, we are more capable of getting a full answer. There's a lot of accessibility things that are coming up on tonight's agenda as well. With MODUS and the last staff and planners that were in place before, I was working with them, trying to get them to pay attention to accessibility going forward with the OCP and other things going on in the community. I have a real concern that that work is lost with new people coming in, and that we're starting at square one again with making sure that everybody's voice is heard and is included. I don't, again, don't understand the whole political realm of it, but I do understand being somebody who is left out of conversation. And I really hope that the, my voice will not be left out of going forward on the OCP, because accessibility, people with disability and seniors need to be represented in that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Jen Klein, and I'm a resident of Victoria, but I'm on staff at Sandown Center. And I just want to speak really bravely tonight on concerns that have been raised from, I think, North Sandwich residents and former council members, that we're subsidizing new farmers. We charge the market rate for land leases to the farmers. Farmers pay for access to every tool that they use on site. They pay for water, access to all of the infrastructure. So I just, I want to make that clear, that we're not subsidizing. We're creating community and access to resources that a lot of young farmers can't afford to buy right away when they're starting a farm. So I just wanted to say that. And I wanted to say, the work that we're doing with new entrant farmers as well really aligns with direction of resources that the Ministry of Agriculture, they're focusing a lot of resources, energy, staffing time, funding, supporting new farmers. So it is something that is really important, not just at Sandown, but provincially as well. And I just encourage anyone, any of the councillors and mayor, if you'd like to come to Sandown, we'd love to give you a tour, show you the amenities and infrastructure that we're building out to support the farmers. But again, they pay for use of all of those things, so I just wanted to put that on the table and let councillors, mayor, and residents know that that is what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other person that wishes to speak?
Good evening. Whoops, now I've done it. Broke the machine. Just one quick point. Councillors, when you speak into your microphones, you've got to have them direct at yourself, because...
Through the chair. Can we just get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Peter Miller. I live at 629 Del Keith Avenue. You have to speak into your microphones. At home, I can't hear like Jack, because you're talking like away from me. So get it a little closer. Anyway, my concern is with Sandown. Now, when this all started years and years ago, it was debated, this and that and everything else. And to me, it looks to me like the concerns that people had against it, not so much against, just all the variables about it, are coming true. The Sandown people were told that the land was terrible. It needed to be highly remunerated and regenerated, and they didn't see, they listened, but they didn't actually believe it. Now, what I'm getting is now they've found that problem. Oh, boy, this is more work than we ever thought it was. Now, the debate went on, and they had other principals that got involved, and they came with their proposals, and the Sandown people who won the thing. But all those other people are saying, oh, it's going to cost, you know, a million dollars to regenerate the land. This is going to cost this, it's going to cost this. Anyway, all these concerns have come true. Now, if I recall, and the vote, I think, on that to go ahead with the Sandown thing was four to three, so it was fairly close. My concern is that I don't know if the taxpayers want to be spending all this money on this much more than another four years, but they've been given ten years each. And I say go for the ten years, but I wouldn't extend it any more than ten years, because this should give them more than enough time. And adding more money to it, it's just, taxpayers, you know, if they become aware of this, I mean, it's not that great amount of money. It's just I'm concerned about things that have been said by Councillor Smith, Councillor McLean Talk. Councillor McLean Talk says there's no business plan. Mr. Smith, he's a farmer. He knows what it takes to do it. And just the matter, the point is that beware, that I would like to see more coming out of this than what has been proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to speak?
Through the chair, can I just add that if there are any other speakers, just to come on up as soon as the first person before them is finished? Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Don Inright. I live on Ardmore Drive.
Can I hear you down there?
Is it turned off? Hello? Is that better?
That's better, yes.
You have to kind of eat the microphone. I'm Don Inright. I live on Ardmore Drive. I want to say firstly that I was knocked out by tonight's presentation, as brief and as hurried as it was, on Sandown and the results of where Sandown has been and is now. And I look forward to hearing more about that in public media as time goes on. I also just wanted to say a couple of words about democracy. And that is, to begin with, if people don't vote, their votes don't count. You don't get counted as a voter unless you actually vote. So the number of people who voted in North Sandwich, regardless of what it is, and at 37%, it was a third of the 13 municipalities in the CRD. But it really doesn't matter. It could have been anywhere, because if you don't vote, your votes don't count. So that's, and that's true everywhere elections are legitimate. And that's a point that's been needed to be made for some time. Because elections have consequences. Barack Obama said that. I didn't invent it. And that the consequences of our last election is what people are reacting to. The majority here, which won by something like 5,000 votes, when everything was summed up, is affecting the campaign promises that they made. And while I certainly can understand that the move made on Mr. Di Battista was not done on the mayor's best day, I also know that it was a long time ago, and that drum is getting like the movie. It wasn't cool to do to Councillor Battista what happened. But then again, it wasn't cool to ignore thousands of people in the residents of North Sandwich who tried and tried and tried to make their points to the previous council and failed. I join Paige Gibson in celebrating the disappearance of MODUS, who came with its own agenda and were assisted in that. And I hope that we come out of this with something better and new. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one. Hold on. Nope, they're leaving. I see no one getting up to speak. So I now call a conclusion to the public participation, and we will move on to item six, which is adoption of minutes. Move adoption. Then ask if there are any errors in emissions first. I don't know.
Through the chair, can we just confirm which minute? Through the chair? Which? Are we doing both minutes together?
Both minutes together.
Yes, I was, through the chair, I was speaking to six A and B.
Yeah. So there are no errors? Nope. So we'll thank you, Councillor Stark, for the motion. Seconded. And vote, those four. Those against. Against, that's, if I get it right, six one, with Councillor McLean Talk voting no.
No.
He's glitching pretty bad.
No, that's not correct, Mayor. I voted in favor.
Okay, thank you. Just a delay. My apologies. So we move on to item seven, which is petitions, delegations, and presentations. I call upon, if I pronounced your name wrong, I apologize, Mr. Gagie. And perhaps you could let me know, or she can let me know, the correct pronunciation.
Gagie.
Gagie? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of CR Fair and the Good Food Network Board and Staff, I would like to thank the Mayor and Council for this opportunity to share the North Sandwich Flavor Trails Report. My name is Krista Larson, CR Fair's Program Events and Partnership Coordinator and the North Sandwich Flavor Trails Coordinator. It is my great pleasure to be your 2022 Flavor Trails MC for the next 10 minutes. I would also like to introduce at this time CR Fair's Executive Director Linda Gagie, who is here with me tonight. North Sandwich Flavor Trails... Thank you. North Sandwich Flavor Trails Festival is made possible by the vision, support, and passion of the community and district of North Sandwich, as reflected in its strategic plan, its official community plan, and whole community agriculture strategy. Other thanks is deserving to Destination Greater Victoria for promoting the region's agriculture sector as a significant part of the destination's offering and experiences, and supporting the North Sandwich Flavor Trails program. I would also like to especially thank our local farmers and growers, beverage makers, market keepers, and agriculture and cultural organizations that are the heart of our local food economy and the North Sandwich Flavor Trails Festival. The efforts and contributions of all cannot be overemphasized as a local, growing, and sustainable food system is possible when we are all participating. Just to provide a recap of the 2022 Flavor Trails Festival, this festival is the community showcase. It's a season-long promotion opportunity for, to promote the North Sandwich agricultural landscape. It is also an enduring activity, following the festival on a year-round basis, that further meets community demand and creates engagement and opportunity for increased economic activity and customer-to-partner relationships. New in 2022, we experienced some great in-person events and an old-fashioned farm celebration at Sandown Center for Regenerative Agriculture. Sandown Center for Regenerative Agriculture and Learning tonight is quite popular in North Sandwich. This event also generated increased exposure in 2022 with a live television feature on Check TV's The Upside. This is Check News's feature five and six p.m. show that started after COVID, hosted by the Q's Ed Bean and Check's Jeff King. This was the first time the Flavor Trails event was ever featured on The Upside, and it proved to be extremely popular. So popular that it set our media channels, our social media channels and website abuzz. And speaking of which, our website during the 2022 Flavor Trails Festival experienced 19,000 engagements over the course of the Flavor Trails campaign. Also during Flavor Trails, I don't know if you happen to see the 20-foot, the 10-foot Flavor Trail flags pictured here. These were the Flavor Trail Talk during the rollout in late June 2022. The festival also experienced new sponsors, including Capital Bikes, who created three Flavor Trail cycling routes, and Partners Notice. Additionally, Destination Greater Victoria augmented our social media campaign and also flew the Flavor Trail flag. And sure enough, we had visitors at Sandown Center from California, directly from the Tourist Information Center downtown. Flavor Trails is fun, and facts are equally fun. In 2022, we had 18 venues hosting a weekend Flavor Trail celebration offer. Among these was returning Kildare Farms, Millstone Farm and Organics, who had been absent during the COVID issues of Flavor Trails, Victoria Lavender Farms, and newcomers Victoria Cider Company. These new and returning venues join longtime Flavor Trail partners Center for Plant Health, Dominion Brooks Park, and Holy Trinity Church. These are some of North Sandwich's great gifts to the larger Capital Region, obviously to the wonderful residents of North Sandwich. Additional highlights, more highlights of fun and education. Flavor Trails promotes educational food and farm activities. And among those activities, we found winery tours at the Roost, a pig roast at the Fickle Figg, a big barn tour and farm market at Kildare Farm. There were Thai food samplings at Kali Annie's Kitchen and ivy pulling at the Jim Land Restoration And that's not all. There was pride and praise for the District of North Sandwich's newest agricultural asset, the Sandown Center for Regenerative the Sandown Centre for Regenerative Agriculture. More than 500 people joined us at Sandown Centre for the Old Fashioned Farm Celebration. This was one of the celebratory events of the 2022 Flavor Trails Festival. The farm festival at Sandown included morning yoga to interactive demos, flax-to-linen making, bird watching, children's and child at heart activities like scarecrow making, and the now-famous zucchini racing. And probably one of the most wonderful things that happened at Sandown was the inaugural Sandown Farmpreneur Market. I think earlier tonight we were talking about the Farmpreneur program from a different perspective. Well, 500 people were witness to that Farmpreneur experience and that market last year. I'm sorry. Evaluating Flavor Trails 2022. In evaluating Flavor Trails 2022, we contacted 18 venues and we received 12 replies. We also received general partner feedback from sponsors, from suppliers. Given the nature of Flavor Trails and visitors attending venues throughout the North Sanich region, the traffic is quite dispersed over a Flavor Trails weekend. So it makes it challenging to capture all of the community feedback, and it's something that we've already started to look at for next year. But what we heard, here is what we heard. "The Flavor Trails experience, including the atmosphere our partners create through their celebration offers and the celebration events, i.e. the one at Sandown, we coordinate, continues to have a significant impact on community vitality and experiential learning." "The Flavor Trails experience meets a burgeoning demand for values-based consumer choices. These choices include the community wanting to both consume and support local food from local makers and creators. Our local community is also choosing and finding ways to create a smaller climate footprint. And above all, our community cares about sustainability." Other feedback included favorable mentions around the coordination and communication resources of Flavor Trails, namely the Flavor Trail banner flags and the website on which we built the entire program. These assets, the two flagships and website, are cornerstones of the Flavor Trails brand and the shoulders on which future editions of Flavor Trails, partner participation, and community engagement will grow. What we learned, everyone wants to restore the map, the Flavor Trails map. The popularity of the Flavor Trails map is equal to the Flavor Trails event itself. This is an insert Flavor Trail map that is available to all of the public during the event. Other key recommendations, utilize the website and social media.
Excuse me, sorry. You passed the time, but if you could go to the more salient points, I appreciate it.
I will.
Thank you. Sorry to intercede.
I will go simply to the recommendations for 2023.
Thank you.
Here we go. My apologies.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you. So Flavor Trails 2023 recommendations. It's been stated year after year for 16 Flavor Trail additions. The number-one recommended action is for Flavor Trails planning to start early, like very early. And I'm happy to report that we started in February with our advisory committee. As in past additions, weekend celebrations, like the Sandown celebration, may include a community pancake breakfast during Flavor Trails or a family picnic. This idea, this celebration idea, is again being discussed with the advisory committee. I'm currently meeting in meetings with Peninsula News Review to publish the map insert that goes out to all of the residents. And our engagement and social media assistant is already working on our media calendar and strategies to increase our partner engagement. I'd like to conclude by saying there is a detailed Flavor Trails report that was submitted to council in early February. I will now turn it over to council to ask any questions they may have regarding Flavor Trails. Any feedback or Flavor Trails 2023?
Thank you. Does council have any questions? There are no questions?
Thank you very much.
I thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, I got it wrong. Excuse me. The next item is item eight, which is mayor's report, which is item A, which is the mayor's official community plan advisory committee, which is, the name mockpack was picked, by the way, it wasn't by me. But I thank whoever did it. And which is a member list of the working groups and the terms of reference. This is for information only, but I'm willing to take any questions from council. Are there any questions? Councillor De Batista?
Yeah, through the chair, I guess. I'm looking at the notes and it looks like we're, is the intention to go away from live streaming that is currently being done?
Say it again, please.
Sorry, is the, oh, there we go. Is the intention, I'm noticing that in the report, or in the terms of reference, we're talking about reporting just on the website. So is the intention to take it away from being open to the public and live streaming to just doing written reports? It just wasn't clear. And then previously, there was some discussion from this council about having CV posted, and I don't recall the response on that, so I'm wondering if that's also going to happen so the committee, the committee can see those.
When you say CV posted, what do you mean by CV?
So the mayor's appointees from the community. We had talked about, at least I brought it up, about having their CVs. They've been deemed experts in those fields. And so we talked about publishing their CVs so the community can know their background. So I didn't, we never could finish that conversation, so I didn't know if that was going to happen.
That is not going to happen because the members of the public that was selected to the now-working groups and to the mockpack are extremely well-known to many of the community because they're either on or have been on many of the commissions, including the AWG. And also, if they were not on any of those committees, the vast majority would have at least been interviewed with this new council when we were looking at filling some positions. So it's well-known to the public. And your second question?
Sorry, it was just about, are we going to continue to livestream and have it access to the public? It just wasn't clear when I read through the terms of reference.
No, the working groups will do the same as the previous AWG, which is report up to mockpack, and the mockpack will be the venue for streaming with the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Smith?
Yeah, I'm disappointed. And I understand that because of the way these committees are set up now, essentially, they will do the same sort of work in the same circumstances as the advisory working group last term, which people were concerned about. I think if we want to be transparent here, I think we need to have these meetings livestreamed. And I think people's CVs should be available for the public. As you know, the public doesn't see their CVs when they apply for the local commission. So I think it's fair to expect that we can have that information out there. I think last term, the former mayor Finnell was concerned that the AWG had a package that lacked in transparency. And I agreed with her at the time, that I thought we did need to have that. So I'm going to reiterate that right now. This is very important information for the public. And it's very important for me to feel comfort moving forward that when I'm potentially in one of these committees, that everybody's voice is being heard, their ideas are being heard, so the public has an understanding in real time what people are saying. Because anybody on these committees needs to be held accountable, just as we need to be held accountable. So I have a problem with that. You can do whatever you want because you've set it up in that way, in a very political way.
I beg your pardon. Could you please refrain from making those statements? It is not a political approach. It's a practical approach to get in the new version of the OCPD. So would you please refrain from referring to political approaches or anything similar?
I cannot refrain from something that is a truth.
Okay. We're not taking any more questions. It is advisory only, so therefore we move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Hitler.
We move on to item nine, which is staff reports. I believe these are the ones that have moved around.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you like a briefing on this? So this is an attempt by staff. We hear council would like to engage with the community, and we think this is a great idea. So what we're proposing in this report is a kind of framework for how that could happen. So we would request that council respond either favorably or not to this. And also, if in favor, things like the frequency of the meetings you'd like to have. So what we're proposing for everybody that's watching is a rotating set of meetings at different locations in the community, attended by a rotating group of three different councillors, different times, different locations. And district staff would pitch in with promotional messaging and helping with the scheduling. So I hope that intro is okay.
Thank you. If we move to, okay. Rachel, I need some assistance here. Which item should we move to next? So we've got nine C and nine D that was moved. So if you go to item two, which is Jubilee Park, shall I go straight to that?
Through the chair, yeah, still on item nine A I. There is a recommendation there from staff.
Yes. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Councillor Smith?
Move for conversation?
Have a second. Councillor Stark, those in favor?
Discussion.
Sorry, I forgot discussion. My apologies.
Thank you. So last term, we had community meetings, and all six members of council could attend, did attend quite often. They were set out at the beginning of the term. There's a few, a number of locations that we went to. The public would show up, and we made no decisions. We sat there and listened to people's concerns. And so I just threw the chair to staff. I'm just wondering why the, I understand the quorum side of it, but I'm just wondering if that's the direction that we should head. Thank you.
I think we're willing to take council direction on that. It's clear that you don't have a quorum if you have three. If you have more than three and quorum exists, then you have to be extremely careful that you don't say anything to prejudice a future decision. But certainly, if council feels strongly they'd like to have more, that's certainly in play. We're looking for your feedback on this.
Go ahead, yeah. Any other comments? Councillor Stark?
Yes. Councillor Smith is speaking about our, I think, quite successful engagements that we used to have, where we went to the Golf Club community, the center that they have at. We went to the church, the United Church. We went to various venues across the municipality of the district of North Sanich. And anybody could come, even if you weren't in Ardmore. We also went to Dean Park, or you weren't in Dean Park, you could always go. It didn't matter. But usually, if it was in Dean Park or Ardmore, you got mainly people from Ardmore, et cetera. And usually, there was a staff member there who took notes, and we never, there was no agenda. People would talk about the speed limit on West Sanich Road or the problem they had with drainage on their property, or you could bring up any subject you wanted. And I think people really liked that engagement. They were happy with it, as councillor Smith said. And we always had, you know, probably 30 to 40 people there at a time. And when their question was answered or responded to by either the mayor or councillor or two councillors or whatever, they often would leave the meeting. So I'm fine, I mean, I think that we could have, if this particular staff memo includes that type of a meeting, I think it would be good for us to continue because people seemed to like that. It was like, it was more of a, would you say, councillor Smith, through you, Chair, an outreach type of, right? It was an outreach by all of, and sometimes because of holidays or whatever, not all councillors could attend. However, most of the time, we all tried to get to them. And often, we got applause at the end of the meetings because people were so happy, you know, that we'd sat down and talked about all manner of shoes and ships and cabbages and whether pigs have wings, basically. That was.
I remember the applause.
The walrus and the carpenter. Anyway, I think that if this is, if this memo, that staff report includes that type of engagement, I would be willing to vote yes. And we could establish, we used to have three or four a year of those. Thank you.
Any further comments? Councillor McConaughey?
Thank you. Just through to the chair. I do echo councillor Stark and Smith's concerns. I would support this initiative. It included all members of council, but I will not accept it, or my opinion would be, I would not vote for three members of council as attending. I've been to many sessions in the community virtually, where it was held online during COVID and at the golf course and at McTavish and that. And I think it's imperative that all of council be included in this decision. Thank you.
Councillor, thank you, councillors. Councillor McIntock?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Mayor, here we are, a half a year into our mandate, and we're talking about an engagement strategy. We decided, the majority of council decided not to accept a brief from MODUS to get us to at least have some footing as to what we're looking at as far as what the community engagement has been in the past. I will not be supporting this. Council on engagement, there are no modules. Engagement tools, there are no modules. It's too wishful thinking to be put in the hands of councillors to create a strategy to reach out to the community that is beyond the scope of council's business. Council, when, two terms ago, when the Sandown proposition came before council, there were hundreds and hundreds of people that engaged in the community hall. There were hundreds of people that engaged in the church. There were hundreds of people that got involved. I don't see this strategy being led by councillors off the corner of their desk even having the capacity of being able to fulfill what we call public engagement. I can't see it happening, and I will not be supporting it.
Thank you. Councillor De Batista?
Yeah, I'm, sorry, there we go, trying to rip the cord out. I'm a fan of all kinds of public engagement. I mean, I'm okay with all members of council going, provided that it's very, very clear to the public, like we do at the public engagement sessions, that we're not going to commit to anything, and we're there to listen and not provide feedback. It's just about listening. I can support the three people. I do have some concerns as to who's selecting what three. But I do also share some of Counselor McClintock's concerns, just about how we manage and how we intake that. And if we show up to an event outdoors, you know, late in the afternoon in inclement weather, and 150 people show up, how do we record that? How do we, how do we take all that information, process it, skim through it? Like, it could potentially be very overwhelming, so I do have some logistical concerns about how that could play out, especially if staff isn't helping us with the notes and making sure that everybody's, all the information's recorded. So just some thoughts.
Okay. Before I ask for any further comments, is there anyone from staff that can comment with regard to how the engagement will be undertaken? And also, how would we, how would we be monitored when these meetings are occurring?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Through the chair. I think when this was first put together, what I was understanding is there was maybe some smaller scale meetups that council was looking into, and this was just a way of supporting and getting the word out, because that is what I was hearing, that they just... There was some support wanted in sharing the messaging out there, so that people in the community knew when those meetings would be. Certainly open to input, though, on how the council would like to be engaging with the community, and we can take that back and help formalize a plan and see what kind of resources would be needed to make those happen.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Di Battista and Counselor McClintock, does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, can I just add something? Through a staff point of view, notice that we've put in the actual attachment meetups and not meetings. So we've called it a meetup. However that looks to an individual, that's up to them. This sort of strategy that's here is a very, very broad overview. So it's if a councillor or council decides, let's put this out social media, this is what we mean by social media. This is not us organizing your events. That's, council will give us direction to do that for whatever engagement, project, purpose, whatever we're doing. It's more of a communication tool, so that if council come to us and say, this needs to go on social media, that what you think social media is, is kind of what staff defines social media, and vice versa. If council wants to attend meetups and there's six people, go at it. That's up to you. We can, you know, if it's causing a bit of concern for council, then we can easily take out the rotating group of three. Not a big deal. But this is just so that we're on the same page. When we say we're going to put it in the newspaper, this is what we're going to do with it. Hope that helps a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any further questions? Counselor Smith?
Yeah. So I can't remember clearly, last term, when we had these meetings. I don't believe that we had a staff member at those meetings. I think that the council, somebody in council took minutes, I believe. Maybe through the chair to staff, Mr. Tanton might be able to answer that question. Thanks.
Through the chair, I do remember being at three of the meetings for sure, and not being the one who was taking minutes, so those are my recollections.
Yeah, so that's sort of what I remember that being. I think the idea here is that we have latitude. If we want to, as a council, get together and figure out, we want to have a meeting someplace, could be timely or whatever, I think it's a great idea. Again, it's the numbers that sort of stick out to me. I really think that all of us should be involved in those, if we can, if we have the time to do that. And I understand why staff came up with this, because we do need a bit of direction on this. We're new council. So I support this with a few little tweaks in terms of the numbers, and maybe the expectation of who's going to, you know, keep the minutes of it, because that typically will fall on somebody on council.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any further comments from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So if this concept is supported, we can report back with something that includes some of the details we've heard tonight.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And through you to staff, yeah, I mean, I'm like Counselor Di Battista. I like all kinds of engagement, and I thought that these meetings we used to have, and our CAO was sometimes there, sometimes it was other members of staff. I guess I was wrong about who was taking the notes, but anyway, I think that all, if we can all go, it's better, because then everybody sees the whole council there. They ask us, as I said, about everything, from soup to nuts, and we try to answer. And it's not a council meeting like this. It's an informal outreach by council to our public. And I think that's one of the most important ways to reach people, because at formal council meetings, you can't really engage with councillors and the mayor. So, thank you. I would support this, but I'd like it to come back somehow through you, Chair, to staff with maybe reflecting that we would all be attending. Thank you. When we can. It's not always feasible, but thank you.
Do we need to change the motion to reflect that? Or we go ahead with motion as it is?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Through the chair, I would probably just withdraw the motion and just do a new motion and ask staff to come back with a revised strategy, if that's at council's wish, or you just, we just leave it as is and continue status quo.
Okay, I think, through you, Chair, I will make the motion for staff to return with a revised strategy.
So you withdraw the original?
And I withdraw my original motion.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Smith. Any further comments? There being no further comments, go to vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? Just to confirm, Counselor McClintock, you oppose?
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. So it's six, one carried. Now we move to item nine A two, which is Jubilee Park playground equipment purchase. There's a recommendation by staff that the council approve the purchase and installation of the playground equipment in swingtime playgrounds and parks, et cetera. Before we call for motion, are there any questions on this item? There being no questions, have a look to a motion. Counselor Smith?
I would like to hear if Mr. Martin has something.
I was, yes, I was going to ask staff.
To make a motion before that? Or could we make it after?
No, I can do it before. I was going to do it after the motion, but you can certainly do it before.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'll do it before. Any comments from staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and through the chair. Nothing specific to add in addition to the report before you. This is a follow-on from the last council direction to obtain final proposals from the three engaged bidders. There is a recommendation to award the purchase of swingtime playground and parks. There's also some optionality with regards to surfacing, and I'm here to answer questions, if there should be any. Thanks very much.
Does anyone have any questions of staff? Counselor Di Battista?
Probably not so much a question as a statement. I mean, I'm okay with the proposal and the proponent, the selected contractor. I really want to encourage council to explore option two, which is the increased funding for the rubberized playing surface. This is a district asset that's going to be used by everybody in the community, and I think we have a real opportunity here to make it as accessible as we possibly can. When we talked about this beforehand, and we talked about the budget, we had some conversations, and I really, really, really want to encourage my fellow councillors to... I'm going to hopefully make the motion, but I really want to support the rubberized surfacing.
Counselor Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a question through you to stock. I remember that the last meeting, we spoke about the fact that, I think it was Ms. Frum who raised the issue of accessibility for this second phase of the park. And so my question is, does that $70,000 for the rubber surfacing, is that what is going to be a response? Will that answer Ms. Frum's issues with regard to the accessibility? I just wasn't sure. I think it is, but I wanted to just make sure through you, Chair, to Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to respond, please?
Yes, good question. And through the chair, I can't specifically speak to your question. However, I can offer that the $70,000 cost budget will provide the rubber surfacing around the main structure itself. So there'll be increased accessibility around the main structure, not in the entire extents of the proposed development.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor McClintock?
Thank you, Mayor. If we went with this option, would it have a budget impact to Ms. Monroe? Through the chair.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Yes, the current budget rate now, the current capital project budget is $250,000. So as indicated in the financial implications section, the additional, the rubber surfacing option would require a revised project budget of $320,000, and that additional budget would be recommended that we fund it from the Parks Capital Reserve. So that would be a revision in the next updated financial plan, if approved.
Counselor Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So through you to Ms. Monroe. So because it would come out, the $70,000 would come from the Parks Capital Reserve, then that does not have an effect on the, any increase in property taxes? Is that correct? Through you, Chair, thank you.
Yes, through the chair, that's correct. I just, we just wanted to make it clear, though, that it would be a change to the current project budget. So right now, only $50,000 is budgeted to come out of the Parks Capital, so that would have to be increased, but there would be no impact on the tax increase. That's correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Smith?
It's working. Question through the chair to staff. Mr. Martin, you mentioned that it's not completely, it would not, the second option would not completely cover the area. So I'm assuming perhaps that there are spokes that would be paved into the... Okay, that's my question, and he's nodding your head.
Another good question. And through the chair, if you can refer to the graphic on the first page of the staff report, you'll see a main structure with a bunch of individual, I guess, stations, equally spaced amongst a triangular area. So considering that surfacing the entire area was up, almost double, double the $70,000, we chose to present for discussion at this meeting a portion just around the main structure, which would give access to and around all the features on the main structure. And that's sort of what was proposed here for discussion.
Are there any further questions?
Yeah, so essentially, there'd be one axis to that, from what I'm seeing here, from the main path, one axis.
There would be, yes, and through the chair, there would be, I guess, a large access point off of that bisecting pathway across. So you could access either side of the main play structure.
Right.
Sorry. I wonder if this is something we should refer to SPAC for their oversight.
I would have no objection to that.
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, I've had some email exchanges with SPAC, and the general conversation was making it as accessible as possible, which the rubberized flooring does. Obviously, we have to balance some cost versus, you know, but the proposal with staff, I'm satisfied completes, you know, a large portion of the accessibility. The current plan with the main asphalt area, and then the one intersection to the main play structure with wood chips just isn't accessible at all. But the rubberized flooring itself will allow people with accessibility issues to access the main park area, which is, I think, a huge win as far as accessibility goes.
So, sorry, if I can just add to that. So as the liaison to SPAC, would you suggest that referring it is not necessary, through the chair?
Yeah, I would suggest, and I'm happy to make the motion now, but I think at this point, I would like to make the motion to approve option two, which includes the $70,000 extra cost.
And I'll second. If I may, I have a question of then, sorry, be unofficial. If council so decided next year, the year after, the year after that, could we then spend some additional dollars to, I'll use the term, rubberize all of it, or at least a larger portion of it? The fact that there's wood chips down, or whatever it is, they can be taken away and replaced?
Yes, another good question. And through the chair, yes, there's some option, there's some optionality with installing the rubber surfacing. There may be some issues with joining an existing rubber surface with a new. I'm sure there's something that we can consider. Likewise, if one wanted, if council wanted to proceed with a wood chip structure, surfacing now, rubber surfacing could be added in the future as well. So there are some details, but...
Counselor Smith?
Sorry, again. Good point. But it just struck me that the more of that, the tires we put down on the ground, the greater the temperature is going to be on that play area in the summertime. So that might be something that we should consider moving forward.
Through the chair, can I just add a comment? Jubilee, the Jubilee Park, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Martin, the Jubilee Park presentation and project has actually gone to SPAC. It went quite a few months ago, and they had quite a fulsome discussion on it. And those minutes did come back to this council, last council, but they did come back. So the actual project has been already referred, and those, that input was given, it was Mr. Martin that actually presented it, and that input was taken into consideration.
Thank you for the update. Counselor McClintock, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak to this do math, that I do recall it going to SPAC. And as far as changing the surfaces concerned, I think its impact zones, that the rubberized surface would be more needed than the others. So to increase the cost and resurface the whole thing, I think would be, would serve a very good purpose. But impact zones, for sure, like our Counselor Di Battista has already mentioned, are very important.
Yep. Thank you. Any further questions?
Through the chair, maybe just to motivate a little bit. In the staff report, it is a line, or it is mentioned that there are two grant applications that are, one's already been applied for through the Health and Community Wellness Grant Program, and then there's the B.C. tire stewardship B.C. grant for up to $30,000. So if I'm correct, that would also reduce the impact of the financial burden.
Any other questions? There being no further questions, do you, Counselor Di Battista, do you wish to make a motion?
I would, through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of playground equipment from swingtime playgrounds and parks for $99,881, excluding GST, and an extra $70,000 for rubberized surfacing.
Second. Any further comments? Counselor Sanji?
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair to staff, what would be the cost if we were to rubberize the entire surface?
Through the chair, as I previously indicated, it would be roughly, I don't have the figure in front of me, but I believe it was just almost double the $70,000 to do the entire triangular area.
Follow. Through the chair to Ms. Monroe, is there enough funds in the Parks reserves to be able to accommodate the 140? Thank you.
Yes, through the chair, yes, there is enough in the reserve, if council would wish that option.
Just as a discussion. Just as a discussion.
I recall a question.
I mean, through the Chair, I would love to amend my motion, if possible, withdraw my previous motion, and just for consideration, to approve the purchase and installation of playground equipment from Swingtime Playgrounds and Parks for $99,881, excluding GST, and the extra expense for rubberized surfacing over the entire playground area.
Only for, before we have a second, are there any questions? Sorry?
I withdraw the first one.
Yes. Yeah, sorry. Any further questions? So we have now a new motion of Counselor Sanjeev.
Having seen in the past quite a few quotations changing over time, it would be useful to get the actual quote on what it would be, rather than just speculating through, so that we have a better idea of what the budget should be. So that would be going to the Staff, if you could get a proper quotation on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, and through the Chair, I'll just speak to two items. For this project to be realized this summer, the playground equipment itself needs to be purchased, so that's one piece of information. For the surfacing, this was one of the recommendations when we asked for optionality with rubber surfacing. This was presented as something that's commonly provided, where there's just surfacing over the structure itself. That will potentially speak to heat, heat impacts and whatnot. It was a bit of a balance. I'm able to come back at a future meeting with this precise figure. I'm sorry, I don't have it now.
So the question, sorry, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I'm just getting back to this, the heat. If we do use the tires, it's going to create all kinds of, I am trained in recreation management, and this is always a factor that places looked at when they, when they built structures, particularly for kids, because it can be dangerous, that amount of heat there. So if there's some way that we could mitigate those temperatures by, you know, doing other things that would have a cost implication as well, I would support this. But as it stands right now, I don't think I can support the full. Thank you.
Counselor Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if we can approve the purchase of the playground equipment so we don't miss the summer part, you know, getting this playground addition going sooner rather than later. And then with regard to the surfacing, can we, you know, have that come up later with another cost plus whatever the heat impacts may be? Because I think rubber, but, you know, I'm not an expert on this, so rubberizing that whole area, it's going to be, with the black surface like that, it's going to make it, unless we put shade awnings over it, as we did with the previous Section 1, Part 1 of it. Anyway, I don't know, can we do that? Through you to our corporate, Ms. Dumas, can we just approve the playground equipment tonight?
Yes, and through the Chair, if I may answer that. Yeah, Mayor and Council have every option to just approve Option 1, and also ask, request Staff to come back at a future meeting with further information on costing for the costing and potential heat impacts.
So, okay. Yes, so...
All right, third time's a charm. I will withdraw the second motion, and then I'll make a two-part motion. One, to approve and approve the purchase and installation of playground equipment from Swingtime Playgrounds and Parks for $99,881, excluding GST. And two, that Staff report back at the next Council meeting, the cost implications for rubberized surface over partial and fully over the playground surfaces, and then any implications related to the surface and heat implications. Is that...
Okay. Actually, I like that motion.
Second. Let's see.
Third time's a charm.
Any further questions? I hope not. No. So, those in favor? Jack? Okay. Those opposed? So now we go to the changes in agenda. So hopefully, I get this right. I was in a little bit of trouble on this one, a few minutes, well, quite a while ago. We're looking now at Item 9C1, being moved to 9A3, and that is the Committee of the Whole Report, the annual review. Let me go to this particular one and see what is recommended. So let me make sure, please bear with me. So that's 9C1. So 9C1 is Sandown Long-Term Operation 2022 Annual Review and 2023 to 2027 Business Perspectives and Budget March 13, 2023. And this is a special committee of the whole meeting, to be, this is to be ratified. So that is now on the agenda as 9A3. So the question, of course, the recommendations of the Staff is the Council established an annual budget amount equal to $125,000 to be funded from the District Agricultural Reserve Fund from 2023 to 2026 inclusive for the Sandown Centre for Regenerative Agriculture. I'll ask for questions before we look for a motion. Are there any questions? Counselor Smith?
Sorry, I was disrupted there for a minute. I just lost my place, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, that's moved forward. Okay, now, oh, so this is the Committee of the Whole Report?
Yes.
Regarding Sandown. So that's moved forward. Sorry, I missed that one. Yeah, I do have some questions in regards to this. This was a difficult decision last time. It challenged, challenged me, really, not so much because I don't give a damn about farming, because of course I do it, not because I don't care about young folks who are farming, because I know some, not because I don't think a district has some culpability and responsibility when it comes to the properties they own, because we do. But where I have a problem right now is that we have had interest in the property, and for us to move ahead with a decision on this right now is problematic, because it raises all kinds of concerns about things that perhaps people don't all know. I will read this. "Our new council, along with Staff, have not had enough significant engagement time with the local First Nation regarding this property. I think that based on this situation, our funding decision for the four years might be a bit premature." And I'm not saying that to try to diminish this in any way, any shape, but we have an important conversation to have with a local First Nation. And I'm positive that all of the folks who are here from Sandown respect that, and maybe they know a little bit about that. So I would like to suggest to Council that instead of supporting the $125,000 for the next four years, that we look at it from a this-year standpoint, to see if we can find some resolution moving forward. And this would be helpful for all the parties involved. So that is going to be my suggestion to Council, is that we, not lay this completely on the table, but to allow us to have Council and Staff time to do some very, very important work, not negating the importance of the work at Sandown. So I'll leave it there for anybody to like to make a comment on that.
Thank you. Counselor Stock?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. Well, I do have a lot to say on this. I've worked on Sandown as a councillor since 2011, so I don't know how many, I can't remember how many years that is, it's a long time. When Ms. Gaggy was speaking, she's also worked on Sandown for a long time with us here in North Sandwich. The economic model that was established at the time was the economic model with the commercial property, so they're linked. The commercial property and the fact that that farmland would be in perpetuity, agricultural ALR land was linked, and it is still linked today. That is the economic model. We won a UBCM Crystal Award for that project in about 2016 or 17. I can't remember the exact date, but the District of North Sandwich and its Staff and Council won that award for our innovation. It was part of the Innovation Awards that year at UBCM in how we approached agriculture and regenerative farming and creating a future for that in the peninsula and in the whole, for the whole of, I guess, Vancouver Island or southern Vancouver Island. I was the one who made the motion at Committee of the Whole to continue to fund Sandown, because if you think about the Sandown lands, they're our community asset. The Sandown lands are a municipal asset of the District of North Sandwich that we all worked councils, various councils and various staff, various CAOs, to acquire for the purpose that it is being used for today. And while it is true that you don't see, you know, many agricultural style features there, like barns and outdoor sheds for cattle or horses or whatever, it's because you cannot in two years or two and a half years have that level of farming when the land was so degraded as it was when the group, the Regenerative Farming Group, signed the contract with us. So my view is that as part of the municipal responsibility that we have, because we were the ones who, with the ALC, the Agricultural Land Commission of the Province of British Columbia, our municipality, and the Randall family and platform properties, we established that economic model. And so it is incumbent upon us, as well as the other proponents that were involved and who were signatories to the agreement, the MOU at the time, a memorandum of understanding. And it was registered in the Land Titles Office as such. I mean, this is a huge provincial municipal project that has a big future in the South Island and the peninsula. And I think that over time, because 12 or 13 years have gone by since many of us were first involved in this project, people forget the fact about the economic model and the linkages between the province, the municipality, the covenant that was put on the land that it would be in perpetuity agricultural reserve land and used for farming. And so because I've been around perhaps too long, or a very long time, and involved in this project since the beginning, this, it is incumbent upon us to continue at least this part of the contract of the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Questions? Oh, sorry, Counselor McClintock?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree, excuse me, the reason I'm not at the Council meeting today is it's darn head cold, however, I agree with Counselor Stock saying that the link is to have it in the ALR perpetuity. That's, that's, there's no argument there. But the funding module is, it's an enormous siphon on a taxpayer, let's not forget that. It's an enormous siphon away from other agricultural endeavors. Just a couple of things that I looked up over the past couple of days. In the Globe and Mail, August 6, 2022, Matthew, and I'll probably pronounce his name wrong, Krykadais, said Tilden controlled by pesticides. I see we've got, or we had six farmers, now we have five farmers, because one farmer, as they came before Council today, has withdrawn. Alderley Grange advertises no pesticides. However, that's contrary to what Matthew said in the Globe and Mail on the 22nd. They've got 3.8 acres elsewhere. So what I see this as being is they are a commercial enterprise competing with commercial farmers that are now using North Sandwich tax-funded property to enhance their operation. The business plan, if you can get it. Alterera, herbs and flowers, I don't know if they have any acreage elsewhere, but they call themselves a farm. They're with a farm. I don't know if it's the organic one, but if they are, again, from that Globe and Mail article, that they're using pesticides. Fireweed identifies as a medicinal herb farm on Sandown, so they call themselves a farm by working on Sandown. And Frozen Coast Farms identifies as a farm in Sandown. So although we've got six people, again, of which one is dropped off, five identify as farmers, one appears to have property elsewhere, and the others are farmers because they farm Sandown at the taxpayer's expense. I can't agree that this model can go on at the taxpayer's expense. The ALR, or the Sandown itself, was identified as a recipient of the tax money from Canadian Tire Land Juggle. I agree with that. But they are not the sole one. They have eliminated or basically squeezed out any other opportunities in this district to move forward with plans or any agricultural funding capabilities.
Sorry, Jack, we're not, this Counselor McClintock, the line froze, so we're not sure if we missed the end part of your discussion?
I'm sorry, I said, I just want to put that in Counselor's mind in this discussion period, as before we move forward, where we're putting this money. Are we responsible? Are we culpable? Are we, are we doing, are we managing best use of this tax money for the people of the District of North Sandwich?
Thank you, Counselor McClintock. No further comments? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, so in North Sandwich, there are a lot of people with large properties who call themselves a farm and do absolutely nothing in regards to farming. So I don't necessarily have a problem with somebody who's got a half acre or a quarter acre calling themselves a farm. It's sort of, it's sort of a...
Sorry, Counselor Smith, we seem to be going off topic. This is specific to Sandown?
Yes, yes, yes. No, this is, I'm just speaking to what Mr. Counselor McClintock has said about farms.
Okay, I'll give it some latitude.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's a necessary latitude, because I'm a guy that farms. So here's the deal. Do we need to support something like this? I think we do. I have no problem supporting it, but I think what we have to keep in mind is that there's a certain amount of money, and the expectation that all that money was going to go to Sandown is incorrect. It was, it's an ag fund. And of course, because we do have Sandown and the deal that was struck, it's kind of found money. So I get that part of it. It really isn't a tax implication, per se. And in terms of supporting or being in competition with local farms, maybe not so much. I mean, they are paying their fair share, as one of the folks said. I mean, they are paying their, their fair share, as one of the folks said, and that's fine. That's totally, I totally get that. If you have a property in this community, the model of this is that if you own a property and you want to lease it out as a farm to somebody else, then you are responsible for doing a certain amount of work of upgrading that property unless somebody wants to come in and says, fine, I'll just take it as is. And this is part of the problem with this, with the expectations with this were so high that now we're seeing the reality of it. And I know the reality because I was there, I walked the property, I know what I'm talking about. So, and I mentioned this to a number of people who were very much supportive of this thing moving forward, but here we are. So I think we have to keep in mind that this idea of a long, long-term financial input there has to be mitigated. We have to make sure that there are other sources in this community, other farmers in this community that get something out of this ag fund. And I'm not speaking from a person, I'm talking about other people, other farmers. So I just, I think we have to keep that in mind. And I hope I haven't strayed too much off the topic, but I think it's all about farming.
Thank you. Counselors Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to refer everyone to Legislative One, Policy Number 1004.6. The subject is the Agricultural Reserve Fund Guidelines. Purpose: This policy provides guidelines for the use of the district's agricultural reserve fund. Two: annual contributions. Council has established an agricultural reserve fund. Annual contributions to this reserve fund include 50% of the Sandown commercial lands property tax revenue, 50% of the cell tower revenue, and any additional funds that council allocates. So legislatively, we have a policy 1004.6, which gives us the latitude and the legislative background and legislative purpose to fund Sandown. And on an annual basis, the council may commit some or all of the agricultural reserve fund for the following purposes. And it says, "Projects and improvements on the Sandown agricultural lands." That is number B, 3B of the guidelines. And I think when I said there was a legislative and sort of a, an underpinning that we have for this, it's true. And I think that we have to be responsible and, and fund this, this project and continue to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Counselor De Petista?
I'll move back to Jack.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just some comments. I mean, I thank you to Ms. Jacobs for coming back out tonight and answering a bunch of the questions I know I had, so really, really appreciate that time that she put in, and it was very, very quick, so we apologize. Thanks for cramming that into three minutes. You know, I'm reflecting over some of the comments and some of the setbacks that's been happening at Sandown. And quite honestly, not being involved from, for the last 12 years, I feel like we've almost set this up to fail. I really, truly do. I mean, I grew up as a farmer, I don't do it anymore, very happily, I hated the early mornings. But I, there's so many big questions. We're talking about soil remediation, we're talking about drainage on the property, and quite honestly, it begs me to wonder the question. We're putting $125,000 at it. It just, like, it can't be enough. But, but what is going to be enough? How much money do we, and, and let's not forget, it's owned by the District of North Sanage. We have some responsibility to this property and its success, but I, I struggle going, okay, we're going to commit $125,000 and we're just going to limp it along forever? If we're worried about its success, is this enough? Or are we just going to continue to allow it to just drudge along and get to say we're supporting the agricultural community? I just, I'm, I'm struggling with some of the big questions. I mean, we just went through the Drainage Master Plan. A huge chunk of Sandown is used for that purpose. We're stormwater retention. I just, I'm struggling with the whole thing, and, and it's not against the long-term operators at all. It's just that we've set this objective, it's clearly not being met, but have we set it up for failure from the start? And, and quite honestly, if somebody told me it was going to be a million dollars a year, it probably wouldn't surprise me. So I just struggle with even 125 because we're just not going to set it up for success long-term. It's just stuff that's been weighing on me.
Thank you. Counselor McClintock?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor. I think Counselor De Petista shouldn't wear so much of the responsibility of this. Have we set it up for failure? Perhaps the, perhaps the original contractors didn't do enough homework. One of the speakers came before council today and said, "Once upon a time," and the council of the day fell for a "once upon a time" proposal to spend taxpayers' money. I think it's irresponsible of us to, to put more money in until we've got an enormous, a well-thought-out business plan, an understanding of what the taxpayer is involved with. We can't just change the, change the contract. The contract was 10 years, $75,000. We gave them an extra 75, end of story. We can't just change it midstream. If they want to change it, come back with a business plan that's acceptable to council. I think it's irresponsible of council to even entertain spending another dollar of taxpayers' money on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Right now, I look at this 125,000 for the next three, four years as being a stopgap. I'm a supporter of Sandown, and what I would look to do is in the next number of months is that I will talk with councillors, I will talk with staff, I will, we will talk with the operators of Sandown, and we have to come back and come back with how are we going to get this thing going properly, if, whatever properly means. Remember, I'm not a farmer. But let's get all the input that we can to benefit the long-term life of Sandown. And I agree with Counselor De Petista in much of what he said. Simply putting $125,000 a year into this is setting them up for failure. They cannot succeed. But if we put together with them the right plan, I feel that there'd be a much greater chance of success. So that's my view, and so I will be voting yes if this comes to a vote.
Counselor Stock?
I would like to make the motion to, I think it's to approve the motion which I made during the Special Committee of the Hall meeting. So it would be to approve 5-COW.
Could you repeat what it says, please, for staff?
Yes. That council establish an annual, sorry, annual budget amount equal to 125,000 to be funded from the district's agricultural reserve fund from 2023 to 2026 inclusive for the Sandown Centre for Regenerative Agriculture, bracket SCRA, the acronym, close bracket.
Do we have a second, Chair? Counselor Sanjiv, any further comments?
Yeah, sorry. I, I can't support this based on what I said at the beginning. I'm a little concerned that we may have more troubles coming at us. So, thank you.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Counselor McClintock? Counselor McClintock?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I understand the motion, yes, if I understand the motion. Can you hear me, Mayor? Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes. I'm having trouble here, and you're breaking up, but keep going.
I can only apologize for technology. However, if I understand this correctly, Counselor Stock is making this, this motion with no business plan. It's a gift. It's a grant. It's a blank check of $125,000 to spend as they wish. Is that correct?
I'm not going to comment on that.
I just want clarity on...
I do, I do not agree with, with your statement that it's a, it's a gift and they can spend whatever they like. They have to report back to council every year.
Before I vote on the motion, I just wanted clarity, Mayor. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Through you to Counsel, and Counselor McClintock. I, I wouldn't term this a gift, Counselor McClintock. When they came to us at the Committee of the Hall, they presented all the plans of all the work they had done, of how many hours and how much it had cost, of what, how they had spent the money. This is not, I'm sure that they've also presented us the 2023 to 27 business prospectus and budget at the time. I don't have that in front of me, but it's, I don't think we're giving the, this group a, a gift. I would not vote yes for that either. So, and, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McClintock?
Yes, yes, thank you. I can just indulge you. Perhaps as a question to staff, have we overstepped our response so far as extending a contract that hasn't been by some other means?
Staff, did you understand the question?
Yes, through the Chair. Is the question if we were to approve funding outside of the initial three years, is that contrary to the agreement? Is that the question, Counselor McClintock?
Basically, we made an agreement with this group, and we provided funding, which was stipulated. Are we stepping outside of a contract or do we have to enter into a new contract, and that would take, that would take time and negotiation?
Yes, I understand the question through the Chair. The contract, the long-term operating agreement had specified three initial years of funding, but in that same funding section, it does indicate that council may allocate additional funding as it wishes. So that's last year when it, council pre-approved the $75,000 for 2023. That actually was in it, outside of those first three years, so it's well within the contract to do that now if council wishes to amend the agreement to reflect these annual contributions. We could do that as well, but it, it doesn't have to, and we are within the current operating agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? Counselor De Petista?
Yeah, not, not a question, I guess. Yeah, I'm, I'm still struggling with this. I mean, I'm trying to find a bridge between Mayor Jones and Counselor McClintock. I just, I'm, I'm needing way more information. I can fully support another year, and that, in that year, we can work towards answering a lot of these questions, but for, for me to look to a half a million dollars for four years without something saying we're going to have concrete answers, like we all talk to the community at large and we're going to get inundated with questions, this is a, a big topic. I'm happy to support one more year so we can get some of that, but yeah, four years, I'm just, I'm struggling to get to.
Any further questions? There be no further questions, we'll have a vote. Those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? So it's 4-3 carried. The next item is one that's been moved, which is item number 9D1 and 2, which is the Budget Committee Reports, has been moved to item 9A4. So let's go to 9A. Is that 4?
9A4.
Okay. Staff, did you want that moved after the, the current 9A3?
Through the Chair, yes, please. So we're now, we're going to go on to the budget meeting of those resolutions now.
So once we've done this one, I assume then that we're going to come to, we're going to, the next one will be the options to reduce.
Correct, yeah. We'll go back to the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to get clarification of it. So now if we, there's a number of items here under the Budget Committee Report. If we look at D1. So we, this is a budget meeting. It's a block. So it's Budget Committee Meeting held on March 13, 2023. You got it?
Yes. I'm trying to find the microphone, but I can catch it up.
Okay. So the 2023 Budget Committee Meeting, Meeting Minutes are included for information only? Are there any, do we need a motion on that? That's just information?
Through the Chair, yeah. We put those on there for information, just so that people could refer to them.
Okay, thank you. So if we move on to item 2, which is Budget Committee Meeting held March 14, 2023. So the Budget Committee Meeting is included, again, for information only, and we have a series of recommendations, which is 5BUDC. The council approved the budget request for one, for new one full-time equivalent FTE QP arborist as outlined in the staff report number IS23006 to support the new tree protection bylaw number 1548 with funds allocated from Financial Stabilization Reserve Fund. Before we call for a motion, any questions? No questions? There be no questions? Would someone motion? Looking for a motion? Okay, I'm looking at you, Celia.
Okay, I'll make the recommend, the staff recommendation and the motion that council approved the budget...
Through the Chair, I just want to, for clarity, these are not staff recommendations. These were the budget committee's recommendations.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I'm, the, sorry, the Budget Committee motion that council approved the budget request for a new one, you've already read it.
I've read it, yes.
Yes, so I make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second, Chair? Counselor Smith? Any, any comments? There be no comments? We go for a vote. Those in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Sanjiv?
Thank you, Chair. My question is back to what I said even at the Budget Committee Meeting. I would have liked to see an ecologist added to this position as if, either in hiring an arborist with an ecologist background. Thank you. And I'll stick with that.
Through the Chair, I can just, when, when we do the, if, if this gets approved by council, when we actually do the job description, this is something that we could not necessarily incorporate as a requirement, but it, it could be seen as, as an, as an asset towards the position, but it's something that we can incorporate potentially in the job description.
Counselor Stock, did you have a question?
No, Chair, I didn't have a question, but I just, perhaps you could, through you to Ms. Monroe, that with the funds being allocated from the Financial Stabilization Reserve Fund, that, that does mean that there, this does not affect the, the tax rate, the mill rate?
Yes, through the Chair, that's correct, and I believe that the discussions at the Budget Committee Meeting were that staff would report back to council on this position and also report back on the, what we project to be the annual tree permit fees as well to determine the path and how to fund this position next year.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Monroe. Thanks, Chair, because I just wanted everyone here and who's listening at home to understand that that's what was brought up to us at the committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, oh, Counselor McClintock?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Could you please read the motion again, please?
Counselor Stock, can you read the motion, please?
Sure, yes, thank you. That council approved the budget request for new one full-time equivalent, that's an FTE, who would be in the union, a QP arborist as outlined in staff report number IS23-006 to support the new tree protection bylaw number 1548 with funds allocated from the Financial Stabilization Reserve Fund. with funds allocated from the Financial Stabilization Reserve Fund.
Counselor McClintock?
Yes, thank you, just a question to staff, Ms. Dumas, does this mean this position is entrenched now in the union?
Through the Chair, yes. When this position will be posted, it will be a unionized position with the local QP 374.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? There be no other questions, or comments? We go for a vote? Those in favor? Those opposed? So opposed, Counselor Sanjeev, Counselor McClintock, Counselor McConaughey, it's carried 4-3. Item 6 of this, which is again the BUDC, the council does not support the additional addition of a full-time equivalent FTE QP engineering technologists position within the Infrastructure Services Department to support current and future infrastructure services delivery as outlined in staff report number IS23005. If I may, does staff have anything to comment on this item?
And through the Chair, not specifically. My report is, I do have my report here. If there are any further questions about it?
Okay, sorry, I was expecting something else, my apologies. Counselor Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, during that whole committee meeting, I felt that this is a very important position. I mean, most of the work we do today centers around GIS work, I mean, landwork and zoning and everything to do with landwork, centers around engineering technology and the GIS mapping system, et cetera. And I felt that there was definitely a critical need for someone to fulfill this role and fulfill these duties. But I know that this particular recommend, sorry, Budget Committee motion says that we don't support it, but I was wondering if there was any other monetary or financial way to fund such a position so that there would not be an effect on the, on the tax rate, the property tax rate.
And staff?
Yes, through the Chair. I think, you know, the only option that council could consider with respect to funding this position would be, one, to fund it out of reserves, similar to the arborist position, or look at another budget item to reduce. But even with the reserve funding model, I mean, it would, obviously wouldn't increase the taxes this year, but if this was a position that would be ongoing, it would eventually, I would recommend we consider funding it from property taxes as an ongoing position. So those are just some considerations for council.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Through the Chair to staff. I can't remember what that figure was, was it 60,000?
Yes, for this position, it was 60,000. It was $100,000 in total and then $40,000 of savings in a GIS development budget that we would use to reduce the overall impact to 60,000.
Right, and that overall impact would likely be in the range of half a percent, am I correct?
That's right, yeah.
And, you know, I voted against this initially because, you know, Santa Claus only has a big bag of certain size, and the residents seem to want to keep taxes down as low beyond as possible sometimes. So here we are, struggling again with something that has value, for sure. Otherwise, staff wouldn't have asked us for budget consideration here. So I guess it's up to us to, if we feel like at this point, any of us that voted for it last time or against it can change their mind. I'll be willing to see if anybody else has anything to say on this.
Counselor Sanjeev?
Thank you, Chair, just part of the discussion in progress. I think one of the issues while I've been trying to get more information about North Sandwich was a lack of land assets inventory and management. And I think hiring somebody for the GIS position will certainly fulfill in us accumulating that information that is critical for any future planning for the district. For that reason, I would certainly support this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Counselor De Batista?
Yeah, through the Chair, just general statement. I mean, I realize the tax implication of adding another staff member. Every time we talk about a topic, it always comes down to services and infrastructure. Services and infrastructure, every single time it gets brought up. And I think to, you know, when the public has those questions, to have somebody like this on staff to just solidify those questions, I think is a huge win. I realize it's an increase to the taxpayers, but I think the more we can answer those questions completely and fully, and I think this position supports that, I think it's a good thing to do moving forward. So I'm happy to support the recommendation, hire somebody. The opposite of the motion.
Counselor Sanjeev?
Thank you, Chair. Through the Chair to staff, I just want, looking at the consolidated budget five-year plan, operating projects, I see for 2023, it's 2.940700, so 2.9 million, while in 2024, it comes down to 339,000. So does that help us in terms of next year taking, bringing this position instead of a reserve fund, bringing it into a regular funds or the property tax? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, through the Chair. So those operating projects are, they're almost all reserve-funded or grant-funded. So they aren't property tax-funded. So the decrease, and I'll remind you that it's so large in 2023 because it actually includes the Galleran Beacon Roundabout Project, anything that's not capital, capital project, it's operating project. So I would say that the decrease will assist us in having probably more Financial Stabilization Reserve Funds available, but it won't, it won't increase any additional tax room, if that makes sense, because that line item is fully reserve-funded, yeah.
Any further questions? No further questions? Was a motion put on the table? Nope?
Not yet.
Okay, so then I look for a motion?
Well, okay.
Counselor McConaughey, seconded? Oh, sorry, I'm putting motion, yeah.
I'd like to make the Budget Committee recommendation 5-BUDC, pardon me, 6-BUDC, that council does not support the addition of a full-time equivalent, brackets FTE, QP engineering technologists position within the Infrastructure Services Department to support current and future infrastructure service delivery as outlined in staff report number IS-23-005.
Just for clarification, you're in support, the motion you're putting forward is not to hire the engineering technologists. Thank you. Comment? Counselor Smith? Oh, seconded. Are there any additional comments? Counselor Smith?
I believe that we're partway through this year, and next year, we may get the same request from staff. So I'm going to support not supporting it. Thank you.
Any further comments? We'll take a vote, those in favor of Counselor McConaughey's motion? Those opposed? Counselor McClintock, I didn't notice your vote, sorry. Can't hear.
I voted in favor, Mayor. I voted in favor.
With, of Counselor McConaughey's motion, not to hire?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So what is that vote?
So through the Chair, just want to check that I have Counselor De Batista, Counselor Stock, Counselor Sanjeev, and Mayor Jones were in opposition of that recommendation. So the motion is defeated.
So do we have a new motion?
Well, Mayor, I would like to make a new motion that council supports the addition of a full-time equivalent FTE QP engineering technologists position within the Infrastructure Services Department to support current and future infrastructure service delivery as outlined in staff report number IS23005.
Do we have a second? Oh, Counselor, Counselor McClintock? We can't hear you.
I said I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you. Comments, discussions? And Counselor McClintock?
Yes, thank you, I will not be supporting this. Perhaps, perhaps staff can tell us whether or not this is an appropriate motion that's contrary to the motion that we just defeated?
Yeah. I agree, through the Chair, it's been defeated, it's done.
Chair, may I ask a question through you to staff?
Absolutely.
So how do we get back then to this? Would it have to come before a different council meeting? Through you to staff, thank you.
Through the Chair, I think the only way that this could go any other way is if there was somebody on the prevailing side that wanted to bring it back for reconsideration. Or the mayor can, under the Community Charter, within 30 days, bring this back for reconsideration without being on the prevailing side. So that would have to be your option to bring it back for reconsideration.
Okay, thank you.
So...
We'll bring it back for reconsideration.
Consideration, okay. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Dumas.
We go to item 7. Again, the council does not support an additional 2023 funding contribution of $6,000 to the Sydney Museum and Archives as requested in the correspondence received January 16, 2023. Again, any questions before I call for a motion? No questions? So could I have a motion, please? Okay, Counselor Stock? Nobody's volunteering here.
That council does not support an additional 2023 funding contribution of $6,000 to the Sydney Museum and Archives as requested in the correspondence received January 16, 2023.
Do we have a second? Counselor McConaughey, any further comments? There be no comments, those in favor? Those opposed? Oh, there's Jack. Jack, did you vote for or oppose?
Mayor, I got zoomed out, so I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Thank you. So the one opposed, which is Counselor Smith, so it's carried. Next one is, okay. Item 8, that council approved an amount of $11,800 allocated from reserve funding as requested in the correspondence received January 30, 2023 from Friends of North Sandwich Parks. Any questions before I call for a motion? No questions, I call for a motion, Counselor Smith?
And I should probably make the motion because I did at the budget meeting that count eight, Budget Committee, that council approved an amount of $11,800 allotted, allocated, sorry, from reserve funding as requested in the correspondence received January 30, 2023 from Friends of North Sandwich Parks.
Thank you, seconded. Counselor Sanjeev, any further comments? No further comments, those in favor? Those opposed? Had carried. Last one on this list, that council directs staff to prepare a report outlining... The council directs staff to prepare a report outlining the tax rate distribution for options that include 0%, 0.25%, and 0.5% contribution to the Infrastructure Reserve Fund. Does everyone understand that question? So I'll ask for a comment, questions before motion? I think people are having trouble with it. Counselor McClintock?
Yes, I would just like to hear from staff what those figures look like.
Okay, thank you. Staff, any comment, please?
Yes, thank you, through the Chair. I think if this motion's approved, then I think the next point is the staff report. So, and then I can just bring council through the three options at that point.
Through the Chair, this is just a formality. You have to ratify the motions. Staff are already ahead of the game. And when we go back to the staff reports, the information that you requested in this resolution is in that staff report.
Okay, so, yeah, that's right. So we have a motion? Anyone? Counselor De Batista?
All right.
Counselor McConaughey?
Let I read. I'll make the motion from the Budget Committee meeting 10-BUDC. The council directs staff to prepare a report outlining the tax rate distribution with options that include a 0%, 0.25%, and 0.5% contribution to the Infrastructure Reserve Fund.
Thank you. Seconded. Counselor Sanjeev, any further comments? There be no further comments? Those in favor? Those opposed? Unanimous? So we'll now move back to where, and I've got to find it. So we're now going back to the options to reduce the 2023 tax increase and approval of the 2023 to 2027 financial plan. Before we discuss, I would like to make a motion on this that might short-circuit this. Do we wish to wait for Counselor Sanjeev to come back? Can we just, we'll just wait a few seconds. I assume he's gone to the washroom and not to Sydney. Who's going to get him?
Through the Chair, in the essence of time, it would be a great opportunity maybe just to table this for a few moments and go on to the council liaison reports?
Counsel liaison report, item, that's, this is 9B. Staff, do you have anything to add to items 1 or 2?
This would be council adding this?
Sorry?
The council liaisons would be, might have staff to add?
Oh, that's what I'm asking, actually, sorry, I got the wrong person. So Counselor De Batista?
Through the Chair, nothing to add, just for the public knowledge that obviously the multi-sport box has been approved at Centennial Park. So that's going to be a covered plain surface, which is going to really enhance sport on the sand and on the slums, so.
Okay, so do we have a motion to receive? Okay, seconded, any comments? There be no comments, those in favor? Those opposed? Unanimous? Item 2, liaison report from Counselor McConaughey, do you have anything to add?
No, I move acceptance of my report.
Seconded, any further comments? No comments, those in favor? Those opposed? Unanimous? Item 4, which is liaison report from Counselor McConaughey, again, on the crest. Any comments?
I move acceptance of my report.
Seconded, thank you. Item 1, any comments? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I just want to thank Counselor McConaughey for a really good report.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Oh, sorry, I didn't understand what was said. I thought you asked Counselor McConaughey to... I thought you asked Counselor McConaughey to read the report.
He said he wanted to.
She's done good.
Oh, thank her for the report.
And so did Counselor Di Battista.
I was ready to be bored for the next 30 minutes. Any comments? No. Those in favor? Those opposed? Unanimous. We go to the, looks like the last one, which is again from Counselor McConaughey. Do you have anything to add?
And I, no, I move acceptance of my report.
Seconded.
I'd like to speak for 30 minutes if I could.
Oh, cool. Counselor Smith?
I was just rapparté.
Oh, sorry. Okay, it's, there's a motion unseconded. Any further comments?
Through the chair, can we just check who seconded that, please?
Oh. Counselor Sanjeev? Thank you. We'll go for a vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? Unanimous. Then we'll now go back to option to reduce the 2023 tax increases and approval. We jumped this one to Counselor Sanjeev until he got back. I would like to make a motion that council directs staff to prepare a report to explore options to reduce the proposed municipal tax rate from 5.9, down by a minimum of 1%. Do I have a second? Think about it first?
Awesome.
Okay, thank you. This, I believe, will save us having to go through Items 1, 2, 3, and 4, and it'll permit staff to come back to us and find savings in actual property tax dollars on a percentage basis. So that would, that I would expect that our increase for property taxes, this for 2023 will be in the range. I would like to have it at 4.5%, but I don't know if staff can get that low. But it will permit staff to come back to us with that recommendation, at which time we can either approve it or not. Okay, last question, Counselor McClintock?
Yes, thank you. Through you to Staff. Staff, what kind of burden is this upon you to sift through the district's budgets to come back with savings of perhaps $115,000? Is it something that can be done expeditiously, or is it quite consuming?
Yes, through the chair. Well, in addition to the options presented in the staff report itself, that's kind of looking at the 1% strategy, it would just involve kind of identifying probably a few budget line items that we could reduce by that incremental portion to get us down to the 4.5% mark, if that's where council's going. So I don't think it would be a large amount of work, but it would mean probably reporting back at the April 3 meeting so that we can start drafting the financial bylaws quickly after that.
Counselor McClintock?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'm all one for keeping taxes low. But there are, managing the business of the district in North Sandwich costs money, for sure. Are we doing it on the basis of optics? Or are we doing it on the basis of saving $18 per person for 1%? I think it's something I struggle with, for sure. I don't like to spend tax money. I don't like big government. I don't like to waste resources. I do like to save people money whenever possible. But I think if the intention is to really save the taxpayer, that 1%, which is only $18, bear it in mind, we have to consider where, what the ask is.
That's right.
Thank you, I was just a comment.
The reason for the ask is, number one, I believe, and from discussion with Staff, that to reduce it by that small, by that amount would not be that difficult, because there'll be a number of budgets which have got some padding to them that could easily be reduced. Plus, what we're looking at is that we, on the optic side of it, we've got to look at what Sandwich has done, which is in the 4.5% range, what Central Sandwich has done, which has increased by approximately 5%. So it is a combination, really. It's real savings for the taxpayers, plus there is the, there's definitely the optic component of it that we're in line with the other municipalities that are right next door to us. And I'll go to Counselor Stock first.
Oh, has Counselor McClintock finished? I didn't want to interrupt him.
Oh, I can, I can wait.
All right, so I wanted to say that I'm very wary of, you know, doing anything to our reserve funding. But I do believe also that we should keep taxes as low as we can possibly keep them. And it's always a struggle because every, as many people around the table have said, you always require services and infrastructure, and that costs money. And with inflation, everything has increased triple, whether it's gravel or, you know, a new pickup truck for the fire department or whatever, whether it's a capital expenditure or whether it's in operations and maintenance. So it's that age-old struggle between, you know, trying to improve services and infrastructure and not exacerbating the load on individual property taxpayers. So I find this the most difficult of all decisions. And the other communities, I've spoken to councillors in Central Sandwich, and they also had a difficult time, you know, with their budget for the same reason. And, but I'm wanting to ask Ms. Monroe through you, Chair, if, you know, we're really hurting our reserves by doing this, by, you know, how vulnerable will we be as a community? Because we do need our reserve funding for, in case any major catastrophe occurs or, you know, whatever. I don't think we should deplete our reserves, and how much will this deplete our reserves? Through you, Chair, to Ms. Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. So I tried to kind of outline in the staff report where our reserve balances are now and what kind of a deferral of this 1% strategy for this year would, how that would impact our reserves. I truly think we have very healthy reserve funds, and I don't think that a one year, and it's not like we're not contributing to our reserves this year, we are, we're just not increasing it incrementally by that 1% tax increase. So that being said, I think it's, if council were to, you know, have a desired lower increase, that this would probably be a good option, just because our reserve balances are very healthy, as long as, you know, this strategy was picked up in future years. The other item is that the province just announced that municipalities will be receiving a one-time grant, part of the Growing Communities Fund, and the district will be in receipt of about $4.4 million as well. So that will go into, directly into a reserve fund that we can fund infrastructure replacement, some of the very same things that we are putting current reserves aside for right now. So I think for this year, that would be, would be an option that I don't think would harm us going forward in the future. Thanks.
Counselor Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I, let's, I was thinking, my next question through you to Ms. Monroe is going to be how much of that money from the province we would receive? So that, you anticipated my quest, my next question, so it is going to be around 4 million? And then what are the criteria for spending that money? Or do we know yet? We probably don't know.
We're going off topic.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry, Counselor Stock. Counselor Smith?
I've been close, haven't I? Yeah, so this is an interesting proposal, Mayor Jones. In some ways, it reminds me of ping pong. So, you know, typically, council gets to make those tough decisions. Now we're kind of throwing it back there to Staff's way.
Through the chair, sorry to interrupt Counselor Smith. I need a resolution to continue past 10, and if you can give me a time that you want to continue past 10, so that we can do another benchmark at that time and we're not here all night.
Okay, a motion to continue. Those in favor? Those opposed?
Sorry, just through the chair, just Staff, I think, wanted an actual time for a benchmark. Do we want to set it for an hour?
No, we, I think it's, what was the motion?
No, we didn't make a motion.
So what I'm asking council to do is to have the meeting go through till 10:30, so past 10 o'clock. If the motion gets defeated, then the meeting ends right here.
I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting to 10:30.
Well, I'll second the motion, because I think, I don't want to go past 10:30, though. Thank you. Because we were here till almost 11 previously. Anyway, thank you. I'll second Counselor Di Battista's motion.
Any comments? Then vote, those in favor of 10:30? Those opposed?
What are we?
Yes, it's 4-3.
So what about the rest?
Next council meeting.